Good Monday morning. The hour of convening has arrived on this beautiful Monday morning and the Senate will come to order at this time. I'd ask that Senator from the 19th got a haircut. My, oh my. I almost, well, I got to the part with unauthorized guests and you didn't, you didn't look familiar to me, so I was gonna ask you to leave the chamber, but all unauthorized persons exit our chamber. Chair would like to recognize the eager and dapper-looking Rules Chairman.
Mr. President, thank you so much for that compliment and thank you for helping us guide the people of this state. We appreciate your leadership. On this very day, many years ago, when my young, when my colleague was a young girl, the lady from the 34th tore down her Barbie house and then developed a demolition company. So, good work, Senator. I made that up on the fly, too. That was good, wasn't it?
We couldn't tell.
Well, it was 28 degrees in the mountains where I live and we felt that was pretty comfortable, unlike you city slickers down here. The journal's been read and found to be correct, Mr. President.
I thank you for all of that. Is there objection to dispensing with the reading of the journal? The chair hears none and the reading of the journal is dispensed with. Is there objection to the confirmation of the journal? The chair hears none and the journal is confirmed. All senators who have bills and resolutions, please bring them to the secretary's desk at this time. We're gonna pause for a moment before morning roll call to let the caucuses, or one caucus, break. We'll give a couple of minutes here and then we'll reconvene. All right, the Senate will come back to order. Apologize for that brief recess. It's now time for our morning roll call. It is now time for our morning roll call. The chair recognizes the majority leader who's on the hustle.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we dispense with the morning roll call.
The majority leader has moved that we dispense with the morning roll call. Is there objection? The chair hears none and the morning roll call is dispensed with. It's now time for our morning devotional. And I'd ask that all senators, please take your seats and cease all audible conversations. Also ask that our doorkeepers secure the chamber at this time. I'd like to call upon the good senator from Roswell, the 56th district, to lead us in our pledge of allegiance and to introduce to us our chaplain of the day.
Thank you, Mr. President. Please rise and join me in pledging allegiance to the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now the Georgia flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Georgia flag and to the principles for which it stands, wisdom, justice, moderation.
And courage. Good morning. It is a tremendous pleasure to introduce my friend and fellow Roswell Rotarian, Mr. Chuck Savage this morning. Chuck was born and grew up in Savannah, Georgia, and we were talking about the last time he came to the Capitol. It was on a tour in the 1950s, so it's been a minute since he's been here, but hopefully it looks the same. Chuck attended college and graduated from Savannah State with his undergraduate degree and then attended seminary at Emory. The interesting part was it was a 32-year gap where Chuck served as director of marketing and executive over nine states for IBM before then going back to seminary. He's a pastor in Sardis United Methodist Church. It is the oldest continuing congregation in the city of Atlanta. Actually, then it was Terminus. Started in 1812, over by Chastain. As mentioned earlier, it's an honor for me to serve with him in Roswell Rotary. He and his wife, Mary, have been married for over 50 years. They have two children and four grandchildren. Please welcome Chuck Savage.
First of all, let me say thank you all for extending me the opportunity to be here. I am, I am so humbled. And it's interesting, one of the things that John said was that when, when, when I came here before, we actually wrote the Nancy Hanks from Savannah. And some of you all may remember that and some of you are probably too young to remember that. So let me share with you this morning. And I want to begin by sharing with you from the Book of Proverbs, the third chapter, the fifth and sixth verses, and here's what it reads. "Trust in the Lord with all your heart and lean not on your own understanding. In all your ways acknowledge him and he shall direct your paths." And then something that I'm sure that each of you are familiar with, the preamble to the Constitution of the great state of Georgia. "To perpetuate the principles of free government, ensure justice to all, preserve peace, promote the interest and happiness of the citizens and the family, and to transmit to posterity the enjoyment of liberty, we the people of Georgia, relying upon the protection and guidance of Almighty God, do ordain and establish this Constitution." In the heat of the American Civil War, one of Abraham Lincoln's advisers said to the president that he was grateful that God was on the side of the Union. Lincoln replied, "Sir, my concern is not whether God is on our side. My greatest concern is to be on God's side, for God is always right." The passage of scripture that we shared this morning provides a foundation for understanding Lincoln's response to his adviser. However, I submit to you that it also provides a foundation for understanding the words in the preamble of the Constitution of the great state of Georgia. The framers charge each and every one of us to rely on the protection and guidance of Almighty God. Their charge to trust in the Lord is to the end that all of the citizens of this state would experience justice, prosperity, and equality. So let us ask ourselves today, are we on the Lord's side? Being on His side means that we will reflect His love to those who we encounter. We will forgive, treat others justly, and seek peace. Let us pray. Would you please stand? "Lord God, we ask that you would keep our whole state under your protection. Lord, bless us with your wisdom, so that all may live in the harmony of your grace, having every need met. Make this a state that has no ruler other than God, a state having no authority other than love." It is my prayer that each of you gathered in this place will know the protection and guidance of Almighty God as you go about your work here today and in the future. We ask all these things in Christ's name and God's children all said, amen.
Senate will come back to order. Are there any unanimous consents? The chair sees none. Does any senator wish to rise on a point of personal privilege? The chair recognizes, again, the distinguished Rules Chairman for a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. President. And again, I'm trying to keep up with our former senator, Josh McCoon, in coming to the well as much as I possibly can this session. And I just want to talk about us. Now, many years from now, when we're no longer in this chamber, we're gonna think about each of us and how we were friends and how we should be continued friends. And unfortunately, this... Thank you, Mr. President. I got a cane. I can use it out there if I need to. That this is a political process. Sometimes it goes our way, sometimes it doesn't. But regardless of that, we need to keep our, our comments friendlier. I mean, on either side. We don't need to let it go the wrong way. We're colleagues together. We're gonna love each other for the rest of our lives. I recently, along with Senator from the 20th and some others, attended the funeral and with Senator from the 18th, the funeral for Ross Tollison. And I thought then, what an amazing process this is and what an amazing journey that Ross Tollison had. Coming from respectful organ, situations in his district, being a family of the Tollison Lumber Company, very well thought of back then, and to become a state senator where he made his mark on many key issues. And now he was laid to rest and I thought about the friendship that we had and the comments we had together and the fun we had together and the serious stuff we had together. And I just thought I wanted to come and kind of remind us of that. Again, we're not gonna agree on a lot of things and we're gonna agree on a lot of things. So let's keep our, our disposition in an affirmative way and remember that we're gonna leave here one day and we're gonna be friends and let's keep it that way. I've learned a lot from my colleagues here, especially the senator from the 15th and his wisdom. Even though he's the longest-serving member, he's still one of the youngest members. And, and, Mr. President, I don't really have anything else to say, but I just want to know, I appreciate you and I appreciate my colleagues and the love that we all have together. And we're gonna work to make sure Georgia goes down a great path. We all have different ways we think it should go, but we're all for making this state the greatest and the best it can be. With that, Mr. President, I yield the well. Until next time.
That last part about the senator from the 15th sounded a lot like something Yogi Barrow would say. A little, little bit back and forth, but I, I see what he was saying. Chair recognizes the senator from the 42nd for a point of personal privilege. Chair recognizes the Senator from the 42nd for a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to take just a few seconds and welcome to the world my brand-new baby niece who was born this morning. My sister gave birth to this adorable, beautiful baby girl at 5:36 in the morning, and she is eight pounds, nine ounces, and 21 inches. And she has not been officially named yet because they're waiting to spend a few hours with her and look back at the list and see what, what she seems to really embody. So I will, I'll report back when she finally has a name that we are anxious to have unveiled, but I am very, very excited to meet her over Thanksgiving. And I've just been on cloud nine all morning, so I just had to get up and welcome her and tell y'all my family's happy news. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Chair recognizes the Senator from the 13th for a point of personal privilege. Senator from the 13th? He waves. Why is the Senator from the 19th smiling so much? Does any of the senator wish to rise on a point of personal privilege? The chair sees none. You have a consent calendar of privileged resolutions before you. Does any senator wish to remove a resolution from the consent calendar? The chair sees none. Is there objection to adoption of the resolution on the consent calendar? The chair hears none and the resolutions on the consent calendar are adopted. Are there any motions to withdraw and commit? The chair sees none. Chair recognizes the majority leader for motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Senate stand adjourned until Tuesday, 16 November 2021 at 10:00 a.m. pursuant to House Resolution 2 E X.
Ms. Secretary, do you have any announcements?
There will be no Rules Committee meeting for today. The Joint Commission on E-Commerce and Freight Infrastructure Funding will meet at 2:00 p.m. in room 310 CLOB.
Chair recognizes the Senator from the 19th to apologize to the Senator from the 13th for hitting his button.
Thank you, Mr. President. Senator from 13th, I apologize. Senators, I do want to invite you today, there is a, uh, excuse me, a forum across at the Empire Room at Twin Towers about the city of Buckhead. There's going to be a group there talking for it. I think, uh, former legislator Edward Lindsay is going to be arguing for the city of Atlanta, and I believe Bill White's going to be there on the behalf of Buckhead City to argue the other side. And I'm going to be in the middle trying to moderate it, I suppose. So it's at 11 o'clock over across at Twin Towers, the Empire Room. It's $20 if you're, uh, for entrance, but for state legislators, it's free. So please come over and watch if you have time. Thank you.
Does any of the senator wish to rise for an announcement? The chair sees none. The majority leader has moved that the Senate stand adjourned until Tuesday, November 16, 2021 at 10:00 a.m. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. That's twice. All those opposed, no? The ayes have it. The Senate stands adjourned.